Monday, number seven, two thousand eleven meeting in the New Market Zoning Board of Adjustment.
And our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our new alternate, Leah Cassandra. Nice to see you. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
And welcome back to our new father, Jerry O'Connell. Nice to see you. And next order of business is your view and approval of the minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand eleven.
Can we take care of real people first? Would that be appropriate?
Is there any reason why this isn't going to take us two seconds?
Okay, not a problem. I make a motion. We accept the minutes of nine twenty-two.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Jerry has to abstain because you weren't here.
Jerry is abstaining because he was not present. All right, so we're gonna... Why don't we skip over the first reading of the change of the rules and take up the application for...
That's what I thought. Sorry, got ahead of myself.
Yeah, and take up the application for special exception pending tonight. And for the benefit of the public, this is an application by Marjorie Bigford. It's a public hearing for a special exception, reference to section one point zero five B one of the New Market zoning ordinance to permit the replacement of an existing porch with a single car garage and a horizontal expansion of a non-conforming structure within the forty-foot front setback. The lot is located at one Lafayette Street, tax map U one, lot thirty-two, zone R one. Mr. Philion, are you speaking on behalf of the applicant this evening?
Yes.
If you can talk, please.
Hi, my name's Leo Philion, three Lafayette Ave. My neighbor, Margie Bigford, recently widowed, who's in her eighties, wanted to build a garage on her property. Neighbor to us, in the process of getting a building permit, he found the lot was a non-conforming lot. It would need approval from the ZBA to get the building permits. She knew I'd served many years on the planning board and zoning board and asked if I would be her agent for this application. I said I would. You have a letter in your folder that says it allows me to be there.
Yes, sir, we've seen that. Thank you.
Can you speak? Please say a little louder. Speak up.
Brief history...
Can you speak up, Ms. ... I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Brief history of the property. My father bought this property, three-acre property, in the forties, and in the fifties, he subdivided into six lots. Four quarter-acre lots, eighty-five by one thirty-five, and two lots, one hundred by two hundred lots. They were two. My brother and I built a house in the fifties on that, and the other three houses were built in the sixties on it, before zoning. When zoning came in, that era, all of... The town actually had... The initial zoning was quarter-acre zoning if you had water and sewer, half-acre if you had only one, and one acre if you had both. Well, this subdivision had both, so it conformed to the quarter-acre lot zoning. Since then, zoning has changed, and this area of town went from R two to R one, which is now two-acre zoning. And so that's why, basically, we're asking for a special exception. If you see the lot, you have your existing conditions on the lot. It's an eighty-five by one hundred and thirty-five lot. The setback requirements is forty feet frontage and twenty-five feet rear and side setbacks. It meets the rear and side setbacks, but it doesn't meet the forty-foot frontage setback. So that's why we're asking for a special exception to allow building in the front setback. For non-conforming structures in your zoning, following control non-conforming structures, when the existing structure violates the setbacks, horizontal expansion within the setback may be allowed if granted a special exception. The ZBA shall grant the exception only if the following conditions are met. And we've been told all the years I've been on the zoning board is that if all conditions are met, the zoning board must approve the application. If any are not met, they cannot approve the application. That's been our criteria. Okay, the first criteria is the expanded structure is no closer to the lot line than the existing structure. The existing structure is... Is thirty-four feet from Lafayette... No, I'm sorry. It's twenty-seven feet from Lafayette Ave., which is the front setback. And the proposed garage would be twenty-nine feet from the Lafayette Ave., which is two feet greater than the existing one. So it meets criteria A. Criteria B, the expansion is not in a hundred-year floodplain. It's not in a hundred-year floodplain. The owner demonstrates that no other expansion which reasonably fulfills the intended purpose can be achieved in conformance with this ordinance. If you use your forty-foot front setback, twenty-five-foot setback, you only have twenty feet to go in it, and it's really not enough to put it in there without violating one or the other. Third criteria, sanitary sewer disposal and water supply are provided. The property does have town water and town sewage, and there'll be no increase in usage, whatever, because of a garage. The expansion shall not render the lot proportionally less adequate. This criteria really does not apply in the other ones. The only place this actually applies to is in a few of your B-one zones where you have a criteria where no more than ten percent of the lot can be built on or can be made. So this criteria does not apply to residential properties. There's just a few zoning districts that we do have criteria which allows only so much buildable property on it. The last criteria, the expansion shall... Does not adversely affect abutting properties, public health, safety, or general welfare. I think the... I don't think there will be any effect in properties. This will help get one car off the road in the wintertime, and it will look no better having it garaged, no public health, safety, or welfare considerations that I can see on the property. My feeling is that we do meet the sixth criteria, and we'd like to have the special exemption granted.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Philion. For folks on the board who may not have seen this, Diane produced this ticket from the GIS system demonstrating that there's... The property's not in a hundred-year floodplain. Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I'll see how we responded to four or five hundred-year floods if we weren't over there. I agree.
Very good. What I'm gonna do at this point is, if there's any public comment, let people come up and comment, and then we'll just take it up once that...
Do you want me to go sit down while you have public comment?
Make yourself comfortable, and depending on what happens in public comment, Leo, we may ask you some more questions.
Aye.
Is there any... Yes, Mr. Wernowski, please. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Ed Wernowski, Town Administrator, one fifty North Road in Brentwood. I'm just here to speak in favor. I think it's a great opportunity for Mrs. Bigford. Even though it doesn't meet the front setback necessarily, it will not diminish the... Any of the property values within the community in that area, and it'll be a benefit to the town assessment-wise for us, even though Marjorie probably doesn't want to hear that. But I see it as a positive opportunity for Mrs. Bigford and for the neighborhood.
Okay. Ed, I understand that you own a property that's an abutting property to the...
That is correct.
Okay.
It's in a trust, and I'm the first guy that gets to speak on it, so...
Okay. Just to clarify for people at home. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Stanley Wernowski, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mother Helen. And I don't hear that well, so I apologize if I'm done into what my brother just said and Mr. Philion. But I have looked at the plan for this meeting, and I have some questions. And my first comment is the zoning setback is forty foot from the street and thirty-five from the property line. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
All right, so, going with that, from the... Plans are submitted, not the... Up here to the existing conditions. And, by the way, my mother has no problem with the construction of the garage, but there's just a couple of things that I want to talk about. As proposed, the garage is going to be thirty-four feet off the property line, and I think I found a potential error, and we'll talk about that in a second. On the existing condition sheet, this sheet right here, Lafayette Street is a no outlet street, and it has the name Bernard Connor, and the word Jake is crossed out. The gentleman's name is Bernard E. O'Connor. That's a total error, and it's not professional to have that crossed out. And the town wasn't taken to prepare that correctly. Also, I've noticed that the Philion property, the Lebrach property, there's no street numbers, and I just find that surprising. I don't know what the criteria is for the zoning board, but different communities have different rules or regulations that they work by. But moving on, also down below, you see Edwin and Helen Wernowski. Well, that should be Helen Wernowski. My mother is still alive, and she owns the property. And then, should something happen to her, then things will change. The garage will be built and so on. But that should not have been on those plans either. Now, also, I observed that on the top of the existing conditions sheet, you have the date October fifteenth, eleven, and I'm assuming that it's gonna apply for both sheets, because there's no date, just a scale, but no date on each sheet that's submitted, which is not... It's kind of unusual to me. So, yeah, just wanted to bring that up, because I don't know the guidelines for the board. On the proposed condition, in the link I mentioned, there's no problem with my mother to build the garage on the range line of the old house to show thirty-four feet. But what I observed, that I have a rolling ruler that we used in drafting, and if you take the ruler on the edge, the back edge of the house, and you look down, there's a problem. The scale is wrong, because that technically, the back of that garage is thirty-two feet from the property line and not thirty-four. Have you ever used one of these? And you can see... I'll show you. I'll come over. I'm not trying to be a bad guy, but I just wanted to show you what's going on here. You take that, and you put that here, back up at the back line of the garage. You see that space? On a thirty-scale, that's approximately two feet, and that should be up here, straight line. And that's what I'm talking about, and I just happened to pick up on it. So the potential problem could be if a contractor is on the site, oh, I bid the job to do the work, the concrete work or whatever, at this price, and now you tell me I gotta move everything back, or whatever, and there's a change on the number one for the owner. And I'm used to that kind of... I've worked with contractors. I don't bid the job of that way, you know, so... But at thirty-four feet, my mother has no problem with building the garage, but we don't want that thirty-two feet. And then by the time you put the overhang or the roof and so on, then you're gonna be another, you know, one and a half or whatever into the parking lot. If you keep the thirty-four here, you're gonna have to shorten the garage or move the garage ahead, and that would be acceptable.
I understand what you're saying.
The rear setback requirement is twenty-five feet. The rear setback requirement is twenty-five feet. So even if it was thirty-two feet, it would still be in compliance with the setback requirement.
With the rear setback?
With the rear setback.
But my understanding of this application is the intention is to keep the rear setback at thirty-four feet. I understand that the line may not be drawn completely straight, but I think that's the intention, and I'm getting people back here nodding their heads up.
Well, the intent is there, but the drawing doesn't show that, so they should be revised or re-submitted, is my point.
Yeah, I think it says thirty-four feet. It says thirty-four feet. I appreciate the fact that the line isn't drawn.
Again, I'm doing with the contractor, no, this is thirty-four, no, it's thirty-two. And if anything's not drawn well, the planning board, the zoning board, or whatever, you make it so okay. And that's where I'm coming from on that.
I appreciate what you're saying, and what I... And I'm happy to say on the record that my understanding, and the understanding, I think, of the board is that the rear setback is gonna be thirty-four feet. And that's the understanding that I'm getting from looking at the...
Well, it's just a state out there. I didn't like the property due to the snow and so on, and I had no answer to any questions that I could see, but it did.
Yep.
And I found it drawn up. There should be redrawn or re-submitted, so it's all in one line.
Okay, I appreciate what you're saying.
In my sense, if you have a contractor in Newmarket to do a piece of work, like with the people list job, and that two feet to turn into a mega block or a change on...
Oh, sure. No, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate what you're saying.
Now, these rolling rulers, they come in pretty handy. You can buy them at Staples, and what you do is, once you put it down, you hold your finger in the middle, and that will hold the parallel line for drawing up time cards or drawings or whatever. And I've used these for years, so... But also, I have another question. Once everything is squared away, if the board has to have the names of the homeowners, the street addresses on the plans, what would be the contractor's normal work hours? Is it gonna... Does the town allow seven to three, or eight to four? How does it work here to build?
Seven to...
Nothing before seven.
Nothing before seven, and I think it's, you know, during...
Are they allowed to work on Saturdays?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
And that's regulated by the town's ordinance.
I'm just asking, so...
Yeah.
And then, all right, my last comment is, will the zoning board accept the plans as submitted, or will they require a revision before any construction is started, assuming that you okay this revisions, you know?
Well, the process is that there's been a building permit application. Is there a separate demolition permit or no? Does there have to be?
Um, no. And there is a building permit.
There's a building permit that's been applied for, and it has been denied pending the outcome of what happens tonight. So if it's... If the applica... If a special exception is granted, then I assume that the code enforcement officer will act accordingly on the building permit application, and if a building permit is issued, then construction will proceed from there. Am I missing something?
We have the building permit application right here, and it shows the same site line?
Yes.
Which is thirty-four foot?
Yes.
Setback.
And my final comment is I'm a little disappointed that the certified letter that came to my mother's house had my brother's name on there and not my mother, and because my mother is alive and well, and there was an oversight on somebody's part, but it kind of fooled her, because she opened the envelope and said, "Ah, this is gonna be for me," so just FYI. Okay?
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
How many feet is from the boundary to have with the building? How many feet from the boundary before the start of the building?
From the rear boundary?
From the my boundaries and hers with the building, with the money.
The back of her building can be no closer than twenty-five feet from the property line. Right now, it's thirty-four feet, so she's nine feet farther away from you than she needs to be.
Yeah, it used to be thirty-five feet. Yes, but my husband wanted to build a shed next to our building, where we have the shed. He never told. He can't do it. You have to move it thirty-five feet from the boundary to befoot the building. Now...
Yeah, I don't know whether you're referring to a side setback or a rear setback or a front setback. There's different requirements for each one. I don't know what your situation was with your shed.
Because the building was this here, all right? Right there. And he wanted to build it further in here.
Okay.
Add it up to it, to make them sell the shed. He couldn't do it. He didn't get the permit to do it, because he says they have to be thirty-five feet from the boundary. There was a go that I quite...
Yeah, I don't know.
Right middle of the lot. I says, "No." Then we have to get that permit, build it next to the garage.
Right. In terms of what we have today, her... For this application, the garage is not gonna be closer to your house than her house is?
No.
To my understanding, it's gonna be thirty-four feet away, which is nine feet farther away than it's required to be.
Does the garage be even with her house?
That's my understanding. That's what I'm seeing in this application. But even if it was thirty-two feet, it would still be permissible. It would still be... They'd still be allowed to do that without us having to say anything about it, because they can be twenty-five feet.
You don't have a problem so long as it's going with the boundary, you know, they have it. That goes right to her house. It's here, so the building to the end of the corner, the house, the garage.
Yes, ma'am. My understanding is that that is exactly what's gonna happen. That's my understanding of this application.
If it happens.
Everything is on that thirty-four progress line. The property line is no problem from building the structure.
She can build, and doesn't affect me about it. They have to build it from the corner, her house, the garage, even up there, like we have to do.
That's my understanding of what their intention is. That's my understanding of what this application is. I also want to say, looking at how it does say on the existing conditions plan, Bernard Connor, and the gentleman's name is Bernard E. O'Connor, O'Connor, that when I look at... That raised a question in my mind about notice, and... But the notice is addressed to Bernard O'Connor of twenty-eight Packers Falls Road, and it's reflected that way in the application as well. So Mr. O'Connor got a certified mail notice of the notification. If there's no further public comment, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the meeting at this time and open, if there's discussion or questions, of the applicant's representative. Happy to entertain those at this point. Do I have to vote for closing? I don't think I need to vote on closing the session.
Yeah, because then we can start the meeting.
Okay, so we should have a vote. I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and now they... Now we're open for discussion.
That's right.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion then.
Leo, can I just ask you a quick question? I think I heard you say, but I want to make sure I'm clear on it, that there's gonna be no sewer or water, there's not gonna be a toilet, there's not gonna be a sink added to this garage?
No, no.
It's just gonna be a garage to put a car in?
They may have electricity in it.
I'm just...
Yeah, but there'll be no...
Okay.
Just for parking a car, basically.
Okay.
That probably related to...
That's what I understood. I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
Motion.
And the setbacks will be checked by the code enforcement officer to make sure they are met, so that's where you get compliance.
Shame on your drafter.
Understood. Thank you, Leo.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a special exception to permit the replacement of an existing porch with a single-car garage. The lot is located at one Lafayette Street, tax map U one, lot thirty-two, zone R one.
Further discussion? And I think Mr. Philion takes the position that, having presented the evidence he's presented, we're required to grant it. That's his argument. Anything further?
No.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. You don't have to go. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to stay.
He's done enough of these, and he'd be running away.
There's a rule of thumb of our business, which is, when you're winning, shut up. Stop talking, and get out as quickly as possible. Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
The garage even with the corner of the house.
That's my understanding of what she intended. That's my understanding of what she intends to do. And the building inspector is the one responsible for checking all of that, so that's the next phase.
I have a building inspector. I have it out over here, and she put the sewage. She killed all of my food. I put it 50 years ago, planted on my husband. The war have a go, and the opera coming in my house. And the potato, he said, "Helen, what do you?" I says, "Well, wait, then I die." I said, "I wait by the garage." Yeah. And I didn't want to have nothing to do. It's the woman I do.
Okay. The next order of business is the first reading of amendments to zoning board rules of procedure reflecting the recent legislative changes regarding alternate members. And the proposal is to delete the current language under the Members and Alternates section of our rules of procedure and replace it with the following. The heading is Regular and Alternate Members. The number of alternate members shall be appointed as provided by the local legislative body in the town charter. Regular members are expected to attend every meeting of the board to exercise their duties and responsibilities. Any member who is unable to attend a meeting or disqualified from participating in a particular case shall notify the chairperson as soon as possible. Alternate members are encouraged to attend all meetings to familiarize themselves with the workings of the board and to stand ready to serve whenever regular members of the board are unable to fulfill his or her responsibilities. Then we're going to add an additional new paragraph, the caption of which reads, "Participation." All regular and alternate members who are present at a meeting of the board will sit on the board and participate in the hearing and discussion of all matters to come before the board unless disqualified from participation in accordance with RSA 673:14. All regular and alternate members sitting on the board will be entitled to vote on procedural business of the board, such as the adoption of rules and the election of officers. All regular members sitting on the board will act as voting members when considering an appeal. Prior to the hearing of an appeal, the chairperson will designate an alternate to act as a voting member in the place of any regular members who may be absent or disqualified. The board members who participate as voting members in the initial public hearing on an appeal will, when available, participate as voting members in all subsequent hearings, deliberations, and decisions pertaining to that appeal. And then we're going to delete the last sub-paragraph under the section Meetings. That reads, "If any regular board member is absent from any meeting or hearing or disqualified himself from sitting on a particular case, the chairman shall designate one of the alternate members to sit in place to the absent or disqualified members, and such alternate shall be, in all respects, a full member of the board whilst so sitting." In a nutshell, the purpose of this change is to enable our alternate members to basically participate in all respects in our meetings except for voting. They will vote when necessary. And in this way, sort of empower and energize our alternate members and that way make us all... Make the entire board more effective, hopefully. Now, our process is to go through two readings of the proposed amendment and then vote following the second reading, which I think we can read and vote on the same... Second reading and vote on the same night. So we'll take that up at our next...
Is there a time period? I mean, we may not have a meeting for another two months.
No, there's no two.
Okay.
I love it when you talk that way.
We just have to have two readings.
Okay.
May they all be this difficult.
Okay. Any new business to come before the board this evening?
I just have one question on this, and I think it's covered. But what if it's the chairperson who's excusing himself? Does he still appoint the alternate?
No, I think if I'm recused, then the vice chair sits and acts as the chairman for the purposes of the meeting.
Does that need to be in here?
I think it's implicit.
If it's implicit, that's fine. Okay.
Because if we make an amendment, then we have to start the whole process over again.
I'm thinking about when Wayne is chair.
Wayne can chair this meeting, as far as I'm concerned.
That would refer back to number two, the description of a vice chairman, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
And that probably says, whenever I'm disqualified or unable...
That's correct.
Or fatally wounded.
Absence. It just says absence, but...
Yeah. And Wayne is vested with all the mighty power of the chairman of the board. Okay. Any old business? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned.